This is the Thursday, December 12th, 2013 meeting of the Planning Board Subcommittee working on proposed stormwater management elements for the planning board. And this is the memorandum from Jess, dated November 11th, 2013. Jen Jessup sent it to me.
Yeah.
Okay. Take it away. I want to take both of you, let's run through this once. I mean, the upshot is...
Yeah, I read it over and back.
And what I found a little amusing is like a page and a half of sort of providing background that I don't necessarily think we needed, but the bottom line is that it was reworded, the suggested rewording is as we theorize it was supposed to mean a few meetings back. So I like the suggested rewording because it basically reverses, more or less reverses the meaning, the original meaning, and actually now makes sense.
Yeah.
And where's that, it's on the middle of page two in the back of the first page, is it's got the current and suggested rewording. So if you're talking about effective impervious area with the idea of making the effective impervious area as little as possible, whereas the previous wording was trying to maximize effective impervious area, which was...
Right, with the at least as opposed to the less than.
Right. So it was saying at least and at least 50%, blah, blah, blah. And basically, the new one is, so the old one said implement measures onsite that result in an effective impervious area of at least 30% of the existing impervious surfaces and pavement areas and 50% of the additional proposed impervious surfaces and pavement areas through the application of porous media. Suggested rewording kind of reverses it because we want to minimize effective impervious area. So now it says implement measures onsite so that the effective impervious area is less than 30% of the total impervious area and less than 50% of the additional proposed impervious surfaces through the application of porous media. Makes perfect sense. Trying to minimize it, not maximize it. So cutting through all the background explanation, that's really what we were shooting for. It is a blessing of what we thought it was supposed to mean.
Okay.
So as far as I'm concerned, we plop that in there and we're good to go.
Okay. Good.
And then the second piece was essentially justifying the fact that there was no time factor in being able to handle or treat 1 inch of runoff from impervious areas and .4 inches from disturbed pervious areas. Way back when, a couple of reps ago, I think before we got hold of this thing, there was a time, you know, 1 inch in, say, a 24-hour period.
Yeah.
And at some point, that got removed and we were looking for a justification of whether or not we wanted that, you know, what the point of that time limitation was. And the bottom line here is that experimentation has found that essentially, you know, that first inch, regardless of the duration of the event, that first inch is what carries most of the pollutants. You know, after that, you're pretty much just flushing water and not stuff that's been accumulating for a while. So the time factor is really important. It's just the fact that you want to be able to handle that first 1 inch.
So there's no change?
So there's no change.
Right.
And that's in section 4.2, number 3, Baker.
Baker.
I'm not even sure. What, 2 Baker? Let's see. So I'm looking at the November 12th version 3 draft that we had printed off. Right, printed off. That's in the middle of page 11. So this is presenting supporting calculations and data, and that particular clause says that pre- and post-development flow rates and total runoff volumes. Post-development runoff volumes shall be calculated by a licensed engineer to treat 1 inch of runoff from all impervious areas and .4 inches from disturbed pervious areas, e.g., lawns. And then specifying the methods that are acceptable for calculating flow and volume. So that will stand as is and as stated, it's, it has had, before our time, had a, or at least before my time, had a time element removed from it.
Yeah.
So that is as intended by the writer and has some justification, I mean, not having a time element.
Just so you know, that was previously amended by the planning board.
You mean the removal of the time element?
Nope, nope. The .5 to 1 inch and the .2 to .4 inches. We thought we'd want to handle a little more volume.
Oh yeah, okay. Right. Earlier versions.
That was preceding the runoff to public here.
And I think the, there was a qualification there, depending on whether you were at a water body, a water body at risk or something like that, it was a higher spec versus the lower spec. And so now you don't have to care about any of that, you just go with the higher spec and you're good.
Well, you know, we want to revisit that issue tonight.
And let me just go back to the earliest one I have.
We had a concern that that was being shoved under the rug.
You mean the at-risk?
Yes. I believe we, the other night sensed that there was a kind of misunderstanding of the designation of those water bodies and their need for more vigilance in terms of the care and maintenance that's brought to bear on them, not less because of their precarious state of...
Right. But we ramped it all, it was ramped up so that all bodies are treated as if they were at risk. It wasn't done down, it was...
Well, okay.
It was, it went up. And I think this is the earliest one I have, July 6th, 2011.
Lake, is it? 525? What page is it? It is on 5252313 impaired water bodies or high-quality waters.
Yeah.
89 in November 2nd. And...
No, it's 42. If that's the paragraph I was just talking about.
It's on 2313. The 525 was just in the poll.
You're referring to the clause in Stormwater Management Plan 4.2, around page 9?
It's after redevelopment, impaired water bodies or high-quality waters, bottom of page 9 and here in November 2nd.
We're still talking about the second point in Jessupson's response, correct?
No, I thought we were...
Just to make sure we're on the same page here.
Maybe we're not. I thought we pretty much settled that there wasn't really any change in that.
Okay, all right. So then where did I miss? Where did we delve from there? I don't even have 525. There is none, it's 42. Anyway, what I had looked up, I...
It's in the poll, November 12th. That's how he was.
I grabbed, I always have the...
It's like that general part right there, just use that. Page 9.
Tom, did you want to look at all, at the, what was removed from that particular clause?
Could you say what was removed?
Well, you were, the whole 1 inch versus in .4?
Oh, no, no, I'm also with that.
Okay, all right.
We're pretty happy with that.
So where to from here?
Let's revisit page 9 in your, I'm going to say 15, I don't have another. But it's the same village. 5252313, is that what it is, yeah? Yeah. That is on page 9, I guess bottom of the page. Rolls on to page 10, one line, I'm going to...
Okay, and 5251, right, which is all of it?
525313. Title had impaired water bodies or high-quality waters.
Yeah, the thing that, at this moment, is all striking.
Right.
Because we're, okay. The implication being that the planning board isn't necessarily going to, would not get involved in invoking some optional thing. And that, striking this, then had us, led to striking the definition of high-quality waters or high-water quality earlier in this document.
Right. Well, we, also, we struck the high-quality water because it was a New Hampshire guideline thing, so we didn't think it was cohesive with a document.
Okay, so...
But the impaired water bodies, this, this particular paragraph of the thing, you know, allows the planning board in the future to, you know, designate water bodies in the town as impaired for the, you know, in order to make this...
Um, no. It doesn't allow them to designate...
It allows them...
It allows them to require additional phosphorus control allocation stuff...
Right.
Based on whether it's impaired or not. But in the past, we had struck this, so...
It only designates it, but...
Is there a revisit?
We just want to, well, I guess what I was getting at was we want to, you know, at least leave it in there as a, it's, you know, it's, we don't have any impaired water bodies now, but why not leave it in there in case we encounter this? I don't know. Do we just strike in the second line there? After main DEP, the clause, or is located in the watershed of a high-quality water, H, WQ, in brackets? Right, we'll just get rid of that and go with just the impaired water bodies. You see the sensibility there?
Well, I, okay, so basically, you want to reactivate it and just strike a certain element of it to get rid of that whole H, WQ element?
And the reason being is, there are a number of, well, what is it? Mousa, is it? Is a, is a lake, yes. Currently a lake, yes. And I don't know the status of the moon, but the moon is on that list. I would think it would be, I don't know. We just want to have the board have the tool to implement a more safeguards on those... On specific water bodies.
So this one, the high-quality water death, is still out because we're striking that clause.
Yeah, we're fine, yeah. So we could just strike also in the title. Impaired water, impaired water bodies would be the title of this citation.
Yeah.
That make sense?
So essentially, what that would allow, it would just allow an additional option.
Yeah. And we thought it was kind of critical because without that tool in the toolbox, you basically have conditions that brought the situation into being ongoing with no remediation, extra remediation available.
No, I have, I have no complaint if you want to reactivate that. I mean, it's clear what it means.
Yeah.
I think that, you know, obviously, there's a, a risk of, you know, having the planning board doing something, you know, that we, the applicant may or may not know what the requirements are going to be because that clause sort of hangs there. But, well, I don't necessarily see it being invoked with any kind of regularity whatsoever, and if it is invoked, there's going to have to be a darn good reason.
Right, it would have to be the main DEP...
Yeah, the determination is...
To determine one of the water bodies in the town as impaired and then...
Just because it's impaired doesn't mean this is going to happen. It's a couple of things.
Well, then the planning board also...
May, maybe, they may, you know, so that has to, that has to exist before they can, but even because it exists, that doesn't mean that they will.
No, no, it doesn't, no.
But as you say, it's a determination.
Doesn't mean any of our water bodies will be going to bear or... Is there another citation that pertains to that, yeah? I kind of think the rest is there, it is.
What, within this document?
Impaired water bodies, yeah. Yes, there's another.
Well, you know, that's the advantage of having an online document, just do a search on it. So basically, we want to see where the word impaired appears in this thing?
Yeah. Because maybe the other citation.
There is, okay, so where's that list of, right here, okay. So main DEP per acre phosphorus allocations for lake watersheds enacted a couple pages later. I mean, I guess we don't really, in this document, talk about impairment. Do realize that if we put this thing back in and we're talking about an impaired water body, you know, when we're talking about citations and stuff, we'll somehow have to kind of, she provides some instruction about that word impaired and how you know that particular body body is impaired, who says, where can you find it? You know, so it raises a future obligation for this body to...
Direction of the D.
To tie something more to this, but for now, I guess we're going to go with the reactivation.
Yeah.
See what happens. Okay, so where to next?
I'm at the end of my list.
All right.
I think we have... Should have all the something.
Oh, yeah. Start at the beginning, because I know I, there was some notes that I, that I made from the last session.
We'll, we'll start at the beginning.
Begin at the beginning, Tom.
Begin at the beginning.
Okay, so now, on page 2, I agree to it's not the beginning, but...
Oh, it's very close.
Last time around, I thought we were on the home stretch with this lovely definition of the disconnected impervious cover.
Right.
So we all agree that the first definition was lacking. I came up with a definition, Jess came up with a definition. I think we all kind of agree that both of those were reasonable. So last time around, I plunked her definition in here and I figured I wouldn't get any pushback from that, we'd be able to move on, but I think that Jess was rethinking even her definition last time around. So I don't know if we can actually do anything with this tonight, but my perspective on it is, I think we have two definitions that should work reasonably well, and I'm certainly receptive to any others if someone wants to offer them up.
What is your, did she have a separate handout on that?
Yeah. Yeah, she did. And then actually, it's the one that's in right now on page 2 on the November 12 document that you're looking at, that's Jess's. And I can...
It's a November document, they said.
It's a November 12 that I had printed off. That's the draft version 3 that I printed off. Do we have that? Yes. You have it?
I have it, yeah. Yeah, I assume you have it maybe.
They should have a chicken scratching on top saying November 12.
Jess's thing right here, maybe it's in there.
And so, you know, I really, I just need to nail it down. But I don't know if we, I think we probably need all of us here to do that because she was the one who was having a second or third thoughts about it.
I like that definition, but I think we could almost just term it down a little bit.
Well, okay, so...
Cut it down to impervious cover that does not contribute directly to stormwater runoff from a site, but directs stormwater runoff into onsite pervious cover, usually throw it into the soil or be filtered by overland flow. Here, I mean, that'd be okay though.
Well, yeah, but, but there needs to be sufficient filtering, you know, that's because then it talks about the net rate and volume that has to be less than or equal to native, blah, blah, blah.
We talked about that other places too. Please give me the citation in the November 10.
Again, November 12, that one, I mean?
What the hell is this? Is this the thing I'm...
Proposed Storm...
Well, that's where it came back from Jen, that would be in there.
Oh, yeah.
I think she, she said...
She said she had changed, she had changed the bottom of a document because it wasn't updated, I had updated it. So that keeps that in impervious cover.
And is this the poll whipping, or is this the Jen? This is our initial wording and this is Jess wording. Jess wording is underlined, initial wording is crossed out.
Okay, so we have the initial, we have my submission, and we have Jess's submission so far. The original submission is the sum of the proposed areas of impervious cover and pavement that receive runoff and by means of implementing BMPs and LID strategies is designed to capture and filtrate the precipitation from a 1-inch, 24-hour rain event. That's the original definition. So what I did is I kept some of it and I added on the end from a paraphrase of a clause that's elsewhere in this document. And I came up with the sum of the areas of impervious cover and pavement that receive runoff and by means of implementing BMPs and LID strategies is designed to capture and filtrate precipitation with the result of effectively disconnecting that impervious cover from the stormwater drainage network. I thought that that explained what that word disconnected means. The original definition didn't, you know, when I first looked at it, I'm like, what do you mean disconnected? There was a disconnect there. So I think that definition takes care of that, and I'm also reasonably satisfied with Jess's contribution. I think she took this from a different estate document, and although I'm not sure if it's New Hampshire or Maine, but... Impervious cover that does not contribute directly to stormwater runoff from a site but directs stormwater runoff to onsite pervious cover to infiltrate into the soil or be filtered by overland flow so that the net rate and volume of stormwater runoff from the disconnected impervious cover is not greater than the rate and volume from undisturbed cover of equal area.
I like that.
So I think either of those will do the trick or, you know, offer something else. But so far, we haven't said, yeah, this is it here.
I just wish I could find anything to have in front of me, your wording, yeah. Well, this is... Would it be the same as 9/17/13? No, it would not.
I think it was around the end of October, it might have been this first one here. Actually, yeah, October 15th is the first, I had a copy in which I had my suggestion. So October 15th had mine, and then the next one had Jess's. So if you have those two, October 15th and November 12th, you have both versions. And you can see from the crossouts what the original one was. So the question is, do we discuss this further tonight or do we shelve it for later?
No, I think we can proceed here.
So what's your pleasure?
What's your, I am kind of finding Jess's wording a little more understandable in my...
Okay, so should we, I mean, I think that's where we were last time around, it kind of surprised me to be discussing it again. Shall we put a sort of a conditional, yeah, we think this is going to be good moving forward?
Yeah.
And then if she wants to bring, you know, open the ballot again, she's free to do that?
Sure.
So I'll just say three or four. And then we'll move on.
Anybody have a citation, a date citation on that Jess handout with the, with the little Victoria one? I need it.
Which one?
I need a way to identify this because I'm writing in my margin.
Okay, which, which one are you looking at? This one?
This thing is running a date for this, kind of seems like October 15th, doesn't it?
I...
It's probably the date. One. Maybe she'll be putting it in.
So she had a couple of them, because this, oh, okay, right here.
She did have a couple.
Yeah.
You have a date on it?
All right, and I can tell you when it was, let me look at some copies here because I think that tied in with... One moment, please. Probably mid-October. So I want to, okay, so that ties into the redevelopment clause and the lovely discussion we had about paving.
Did we tie that down? We have.
We have tied it down now, yes.
Hello, yeah.
Okay, redevelopment, page 8 at the moment.
Well, let's just describe it.
Okay, yeah, so, so the change, I think, my guess would be around October 15th.
Okay.
Thereabouts.
October 2.
Yeah.
Just so we can identify what it is that's plugged in.
Sure. All right, so I think we're through with this thing. So shall I kind of continue on from the suggested pervious cover? Okay, so high-quality water, still being omitted. All right, so we sort of addressed for the first time, or questioned for the first time on page 3, again, I'm looking at the November 12 one, the definition of permit by notification and permit by rule. So went out on the web at large and did a search. And interestingly enough, we're, that's the definition still, page 3. P's.
Permit by notification.
Got you. So I would say that the permit by rule, there I found, this definition comes from the National MP something or other. Okay, so it's a national document, like a DEP type of thing. Which, which has, well, it's a, it's actually a... There is a document out there, it's a national document that has a definition of permit by rule, and it has to do with stormwater.
Yeah.
But we're not necessarily citing it anywhere else in this document. The permit by notification actually comes from a state of New Hampshire document, this definition. Now, looking at both of these things, you know, I see lots of words here, it attempts to be informative, but I don't get a good comparison of what's different between the two.
Yes.
And it effectively is sort of useless, in my opinion, and I think...
May we consider striking permit by notification?
Well, well, we do have both of those in this document. We have the... Hold on. Okay, so incidental disturbance uses a permit by notification process, and the non- incidental uses a permit by rule process.
No.
Is that a no?
No, I said, oh.
Oh, okay.
Oh. We have, in the land use chart, there's a hierarchy of CEO review or something? Not conditionally, yeah, it's, it's, in this, in the land use chart that exists in Zollin Williams, we, under our designation equals CEO review, which means merely that the project must be reviewed by the CEO and a permit may be required.
Okay, and how does that germinate to these definitions?
With that, the permit by notification is a notification to the CEO, is it not?
Yes, it is.
So could we just say, omit that citation and just say, wherever it's included, just say CEO review?
Well, okay, so if we go to the couple pages hence, if we look at, say, page 5 in the middle of that, there's this section 1511, management of incidental disturbance on the middle of page. And it says, second section, number 2, an application for a permit by notification in an LID plan shall be submitted to the code enforcement office, blah, blah, at least 10 working days in advance, and if not revised by the code enforcement officer within 10 working days of submission, then the permit shall become valid, and then the second point. But the key here is that it is informative, you know... You know, it's a permit by notification. That means, once I submit it, if I don't hear anything back within a certain period of time, it's going to be good. I don't have to get any response at all from this. Whereas the non-incidental disturbance has a permit by rule.
Right.
And it requires substantive response. So given that, and given the fact that the definitions, okay. I guess it's worth reading. Right now, permit by notification says, "A streamlined permitting process for certain minimum-impact projects that propose impacts to protected resources. The rules and process identify certain projects in wetlands or surface waters or other protected resource areas that are minimum impact, yet carried out according to the requirements in the rules." And then permit by rule, which is a little more stringent, "A shortened permitting procedure pertaining to activities in, on, or over a protected natural area or any freshwater, wetland, great pond, river, stream, or brook. It ensures that activities such as dredging, bulldozing, removing or displacing soil, sand, or vegetation, filling any area, constructing, repairing, or altering any permanent structure do not degrade or destroy the aforementioned protected natural areas or freshwater resources." Now, I would say to you that both of those definitions are roughly equivalent. They both say they're streamlined or shortened, and they both say they are for protecting the wetlands. So I don't get anything, any distinction from either of those things. So let me regale you with what I think makes more sense to me, and it may or may not make more sense to you. So permit by notification, and let's see. Okay. Permit by notification, "A permitting process which is validated by the absence of an explicit denial within a defined period of time." And actually, it's, originally I just said a permit. So this eliminated word. So it's a permit which is validated by the absence of an explicit denial within a defined period of time. And then a permit by rule is a permit which is validated by an explicit approval. A permit by rule, you have to get a response to validate this thing, that they have to say they approve. A permit by notification is just a, have to not disapprove, and you're good. That's the logical difference between those two. From what I can glean.
I agree, but
And I think that makes sense in terms of the definitions. However, it's not a legal thing. If you want to leave all that gobbledygook in there, you know, because it was originally there, you know, I don't have a quibble with that either. I just don't think it does any good for me. You know, I don't think it tells me it's informative. I think it's just a waste of space. But, you know, that's my
Yes, we do need both of them in there, but I would hope that we could come up with a cleaner definition for permit by notification. I have no problem with the existing definition. I don't know if we have to, I mean, it is what it says it is, permit by notification. Granted, the absence of a response to the initial notification is what triggers approval, but I don't think we have to go
Well, I mean, I think those are the key points of the difference between the two, which it absolutely doesn't talk about. Which is stupid. If I'm defining something, what are the key elements that differentiate these two? Gee, I guess we're not going to put them in the definition.
I hear completely what you're saying, but I would wish to heaven that we could come up with a more concise way to say it.
Well luckily, it's not that critical.
Right.
So I merely state my entirely biased opinion.
Would you maybe think of wrapping that verbiage up as a Christmas present to Gavin and myself? Thank you very much, Paul.
So you're looking for
Not a big package.
Something, you're looking for some paperwork next time around with that information. Is that a correct statement? Or would you prefer I just
Precisely. Push that thing through a strainer.
It's still going to be the same way.
Maybe get it down a four.
There's going to be as many words as there were this time around.
It was horrible.
Let's move on. I know that you're going to help us with that. Now, I have a tendency to pick my battles, which is why I'm not, you know, whatever, but, you know, all I'm telling you is
It was a wonderful attempt.
These two definitions are just a waste of space.
No, the permit by rule is needed, and we do have to identify permit by notification, but I think we can come up with something that is more beautiful.
Well, you can come up with something that's more beautiful.
I will try.
You took my shot.
I will try.
So I'll get to shoot down the flag next time. Okay.
Next.
All right.
Run it by Jess.
Right, right. Which is not going to be an inconsiderable thing. Okay, so looking at applicability, page four. I haven't rewritten this, but I believe I have some checkmarks sufficient to convince me that I think we had substantive agreement on what we're doing with that lovely applicability thing, and we don't have to thrash over it anymore. I just have to write up what we agreed about last time. So I think next time around
Does a draft of that exist?
I can read them for you if you'd like. I mean, my chicken scratching here is serving the purpose for me. If you'd like, we can go through it.
Yeah, let's without getting lost.
Okay, well, that's always a risk. Shall we? Okay, so top of page four, applicability. So this subordinate clause here in the middle, delineated by commas, we're moving to the end.
What is the clause, please?
The four projects not already subject to a main DEP stormwater permit. Because the quibble was, gee, I'm talking about something totally different, and then I'm going back to the original subject. So I want to put this at the end. So this first clause now says, "This stormwater ordinance shall apply to new development within the following zones and as further qualified in one and two below for projects not already subject to a main DEP stormwater permit." That's what that clause now says. So that's, middle thing is now
You added to
It's not a header.
First point.
No, we're going to be a red under applicable. It's reshuffled, it's shuffled, every word that I uttered is already there. I just uttered them in a different order. So that subordinate clause, that for projects not already subject to a main DEP stormwater permit, is just done at the end. Before the colon, after comma.
Is that on the 1110 copy?
Is what on the 1110 copy?
You revised verbiage there.
No, none of it is, none of it is in a directly readable form. Like I said, I just made some notation, too, we talked about it last time, about what we agreed upon. And I'm attempting to, you know, reconstruct that. Okay, so that's the first part. And then the ABC, okay?
What's the other one?
Okay? All right, so
What was it something, it is in your 1110? It begins with all new development?
No, no, that was the one before, I think.
What do you have?
Oh, okay, this, yeah, this is the Jeff's version thing, so. I think you had sent out like an earlier copy of this thing, probably the October 15th. Okay, this is page four. "This ordinance shall apply to all new development, blah, blah, blah," so like a four-line paragraph. That was the October 15th one that probably ended up going with your letter. So that's why she, you know, she would have sort of regurgitated that backwards. Okay, so if you look at November 12th, which is the one we, which is the closest one to what I'm to what we agreed on last time around. November 12th. So are we good with that first sentence?
We'll read, move on.
If you're not looking at the November 12th, you're just going to get lost. We wouldn't want that.
Yeah, and I don't have them.
Oh, okay. Well, we can probably share. Okay, so this, this is what we were talking about last time around. And so this clause is just
Going at the end.
Okay, so then A, B, and C is correct. So number one and number two now are talking about, or providing more detail from what is stated in number one, and we know that those three zones have to apply before you move on. So number one, "All new development, including construction," the word development was changed to construction last time around, "of a new structure or expansion of an existing structure, including new or expansion of decks, patios, retaining walls, accessory structures, or impervious surfaces, if it meets the threshold level of disturbance as delineated in sections 525, 2, 1, 5." That's one. Two is, "New or expansion of decks, patios, retaining walls, accessory structures, or impervious surfaces, whether it meets the threshold of disturbance or not, shall meet requirements in section 525, 2, 4, 3." Those are, that's what we agreed to last time around. And the idea being that the decks and patios and all that stuff may well be part of one, but if one does not apply for any reason, those sub-projects are still covered in number two. We're still looking at basic guidelines for those little, being sub-projects, regardless of whether or not one is invoked. That's that seems to be, that is my intent, and I think that's what the original intent of this thing was. And this, in my opinion, makes that clearer, or clear. All right, so exclusions. I think we're good with that.
And we have consensus on that?
On what? This?
Just on what with that?
This?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Let's
In fact, I think she was the one who wanted to move this clause over to the end, and I got no problem with that.
Yeah, well, let's go with that.
So, you know, I have checkmarks here, I think we're good with that.
Yeah.
Exclusions, the other thing that we had talked about was the advisability or not of sort of switching this around a little bit, putting exclusions first, or and I know that you were pretty much against shuffling that around, and I consider that another one of those things, which is, you know, it doesn't make it less clear, I think the intent was just to try to allow for less verbiage for people to have to get through before they know they can bail. But it doesn't make it unclear.
It followed the format, my point that I made last time was it follows the format that's existing in here.
Yeah, and that's something that I had not, and you're talking about the rest of the zoning ordinance, I think.
Primarily, it's in the gravel extraction.
Okay, so that's something I forgot to relook up, but I certainly agree that we wouldn't want to be inconsistent within the zoning ordinance itself.
Well, let's tie those two points down.
It would be nice to be able to do that. Can you cite, and I have the ordinance here.
So many names here.
The model I'm basing and thinking of?
Yeah, so just for giggles, if we look at, say, another part of the ordinance that has, say, applicability, exclusions, and then the rest of that. Does it happen in that ordinance? You're saying the gravel, and do you know which part of the gravel is in? Hand, I don't recall. I mean, while we're talking about it, we might as well all sort of see it or not see it.
Page forty-six, forty-seven.
Okay. We've got commercial or industrial, okay. Performance standards, you're talking about commercial or industrial groundwater, and/or spring water extraction, and/or storage, 510?
Mineral extractive industry.
What section, what's the number of your section? I'm not sure.
I went to page forty-five.
Five, nine, two?
And it's not listed as exclusion.
Five, nine, two. Permit required.
The, they don't call it exclusions in this, but it is, that's what it is.
Okay, and I can also do an actual, you know, do a search on the electronic document, see if I can find the word exclusions. Again, you know, I personally, I think by the time we get to public hearing, and by the time we get to town meeting, I think I would be much more comfortable with having trod on this as little as possible. So that every tread mark needs to have a good and valid reason for it. I don't really have a good and valid reason for it, other than it seems more organized. So you know, I'm leaving it the way it is. The
Is not an issue. That's the only citation I can remember that's in there, that has a list of exclusions.
Okay, well
There's probably others.
There may be, so I Just making a note.
Guessing for myself. The point I would make is it's just common practice to follow requirements with exclusions.
So it's a second, order precedent, question mark. So I can hold that up next time around. Okay, so, moving on. Levels of disturbance.
May I ask, what is the date of this document?
This is dated November 12th, 2013, and I still have a copy on my laptop, if you wanted to I suspect you'll find it somewhere. I mean, I lost something for one of our meetings, and then two days later, I found it again in the same paperwork I had at the meeting. I mean, when you have enough paperwork, it's easy to lose stuff.
It seems strange that you guys would go open my office and steal my documents.
Yeah, well, you know, be careful who you associate with. Okay, so, page five, levels of disturbance. We had agreed on the definition, it was the original quibble about that disturbance of land means any time that
Oh, God.
Whatever. So now it is a disturbance of land is the exposure of soil, gravel, or rocks by human activities such as clearing trees or vegetation, grading, blasting, or excavation. This includes buildings, driveways, rockways, lawn areas, construction access, and grading. And checkmark indicates to me that we had agreed that we're good with that. I don't think we necessarily need to go over the changes we had made to incidental disturbance, because that was a while back. And the non-incidental disturbance, you know, the moving of the end to make it very clear.
Right, right.
Jess is going to be so proud of this one, you know.
Yeah, but We're going to think we're in good shape, but then we're going to go back a few steps when we have another set of changes. Okay, so here, I've got to implement So I had taken a shot at correcting this clause on page nine, the 312 redevelopment, 312, 3A, and this was the point number one, the real key reason why you had set that letter off for that opinion. Yeah, the thing we opened it The back of page one on the response talks about 3A, and the, here's what it's currently saying, and here's what I suggested says. I'm just going to plonk that definition. I'm going to just plonk that right in here. So so what this is doing is it's a subset of item three, which says, "As for redevelopment sites with more than 40% existing impervious surface coverage, stormwater shall be managed for water quality in accordance with one or more of the following techniques listed in order of preference," and this is the first of three items, and we're only going to talk about the first one. The current one says, "Implement measures onsite that result in an effective impervious area of at least 30% of the existing impervious surfaces and pavement areas, and 50% of the additional proposed impervious surfaces and pavement areas through the application of porous media." The effect of that paragraph would be to maximize the effective impervious area up to, and perhaps in making it the subtotal of the total impervious area, meaning we've really done nothing to reduce the total impervious area, and that is counter to a limit that we want to minimize it. And that was the reason that we sent that letter off. So the new suggestion is, "Implement measures onsite so that the effective impervious area is less than 30% of the total impervious area, and less than 50% of the additional proposed impervious surfaces through the application of porous media." of the additional proposed impervious surfaces through the application of porous media." Now, I guess the only question I would have is, does the application of porous media apply only to the second piece, or does it apply to both pieces?
I think they put it with the second one, because it's additional areas, so you have the option of how you're gonna make the area, so it'd be easier to insert the pores as opposed to the existing surface you have to change it. So you could remediate it as opposed to changing it, rather be more effective for you.
Well, this is a case where punctuation is kind of important. So, is it your type that it means that applies to both?
I think it can, I mean, you could, you could use porous media.
Well, you could, but it seems to be requiring that you use porous media for this remediation, which is not necessarily intended, I don't think. Might be one suggestion, but obviously you could use LID practices in general.
Well, that's what it says in B, and then, because it says, you know, through the application of porous, or B, implement other LID. I think they're saying, "We like porous media, but you could use..."
Okay, thank you for pointing that out. Yeah, it makes a little more sense when you look at the larger picture. And what's the third one saying? Okay, off-site BNP's. Okay, so, steadily increasing cost and complication. Measures on site that result through the application of porous media. Failing that, listed in order of preference. Okay, so failing that, if you're not gonna do that, then you do this, and you're gonna do other LID techniques.
I understand acronym, MEP, what is that?
Maximum extent practical. See the two paragraphs above?
I think it's a definition. It is a definition, good.
MEP. Okay. Thank you. Jeff, you just love acronyms, huh? Just nixay. Okay, so, then I guess it sort of doesn't really matter whether it applies to one or both. By implication, looking at these three nested things, an increasing complication, increasing diligence, it, one would think that it's talking about both. Because really, it's talking about porous media. Hey, let's try porous media for this. And, okay, here's the next step, if you don't want to do that, and it's gonna be a little bit more involved, let's do these LID practices, and then the third one is gonna be off-site BNP's, which is more of a commercial type of thing, and you're gonna pipe stuff somewhere else for treatment. And that gets into much higher-end stuff. So, that said, I think the suggested rewording, yeah, is not, is not sufficiently vulnerable to try to attack it, you know, I think it's reasonable. "Implement measures on site so that the effective impervious area is less than thirty percent of the total impervious area, and less than fifty percent of the additional proposed impervious surfaces through the application of porous media." Or B or C.
Good.
Okay?
I'll listen carefully, say aye. Aye?
Aye, aye.
Okay. So I will fold in this suggested rewording here. I think we're certainly, even if we're not, all i's dotted and t's crossed on this one, we're darn close.
Yeah.
If we start out not being horrible, it's good. Okay, so, speaking of which, item four on the same page, next line item. This is something we had a, a couple of spirited discussions about, and this is why...
I love those.
We were, yes. I love them so much that I think I'm gonna try to minimize them in my future.
Yeah, that's the idea.
But, better here than at a public hearing or detention.
Yeah, yeah.
So...
My knuckles hurt.
Item four. My forehead hurts from banging against the wall. Okay, so, adding one word, "If an asphalt maintenance project requires substantially removing coarse grabbles or other materials from the base under the asphalt, then the asphalt shall be replaced using LID practices, e.g. porous pavement." And the word substantially, I like that substantially better than the original version, because it puts the burden of proof on the town that the homeowner or property owner removes substantially from the undercoat, as opposed to just saying, "If they remove coarse grabbles." Oh, look at that pebble there, you removed that pebble, therefore, you have to do this. You know, then you have to, you have to prove with substantially, that's great, and I think that's fair, and it really puts the burden on the town, but it leaves it in there, and you really know what the goal is here, to, you know. So you know if you have a large project, and you're doing all of that, that you're gonna need to do this.
I guess so, yeah.
And it gets, you know, the significantly smaller projects off the potential hook. Okay, so, impaired water bodies, and as we discussed earlier, that's going back in mostly, except for that one clause.
Do you have the code of ten, Jess?
I do.
So the notion with impaired water...
The ones are light yellow.
Is merely going to be to omit that phrase, board is located in the water sheet of high-quality water.
Yes, so we leave the option for the planning board, but it's not predicated on a new Hampshire concept, it's just talking about located in the water sheet of impaired water body. And we will have to substantiate what an impaired water body is, do we have any, and where can I find, you know, if my water body is impaired? Because I have to know that when I'm making application. And going page, 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 page. Okay, so, middle page thirteen, this goes along with this point of contention here from page applicability, top of page four. So the intent here is that this will read substantially as however, let's see, however item two reads on page four, that's how item thirteen is gonna read. That's my intent, that, you know, every comma, every phrase here will be identical, so that you know that whatever's going on in two, that's, you know, that's what we're talking here, page thirteen.
And what is the particular citation?
It's item four dot three, stormwater management for decks, patios, retaining walls, impervious surfaces. Incidentally, the title doesn't actually have the accessory structures in there, but I think that's a, that's a biggie.
Yeah, but I thought we were, we have not contested the wording under 525, 243.
Well, it originally said, included, the phrase, "Not part of the development by new primary structure or rebuilding expansion shall meet the following requirement." So that's been stricken, so now it just says, "New or expansion of decks, patios, retaining walls, accessory structures, or impervious surfaces shall meet the following requirement." And keeping in mind that these requirements, to my knowledge at this time, and we're gonna be looking at a little bit more soon, these requirements don't require additional paperwork or anything, it's just guidelines of how to construct. No permitting process that I'm aware of. It's just, you know, guidelines on how to do it. And I think that if it's part of a larger project that's got paperwork involved, or whether it's free and easy on its own, either way, you know, you don't want to circumvent these reasonable guidelines for constructing within those results.
Yeah. Woo-hoo. Okay. So, I promise that if one of you puts the November, two items that I'm missing.
What's this?
This storm...
What am I missing?
Okay.
Thank you.
In my mailbox tomorrow morning, I will have sent it further.
What about your mailbox?
February two, thirteen, draft of Jefferson, and you're in November eleventh, I guess it is, twelve.
Okay, so you've misplaced two documents? Okay, so, show me.
What? If I could show it to you, I wouldn't be missing it.
From my pile of stuff here.
I can show you. This one.
It's, it's, it's... That looks like one that has my writing on it.
November twelve.
Yeah, I know that one.
I want to cover you that, but you're gonna print this out a new one for next time anyway, so.
I am, but of course he's gonna want it.
No, no, this one right here, that's one, and I think this is the other one.
So you want November twelve, right?
Isn't this the other one you're drawing on?
Yes.
Yeah.
And I, they must, they're in my papers.
I'm sure you got some of them.
Okay, how about...
Actually, I do have February two. I take it.
Got that one.
Oh, my God.
Right there. I agree with it.
Could we reshuffle?
Sure.
Yeah.
I don't know why, but I'm gonna start on page one. This has been a wonderful evening, and I hope we never have one like it again.
Well, it probably won't.
It was sort of a shot in the dark.
Noah, be careful what you wish for.
This is good, we went over a lot of stuff.
Okay, so, I think we're only moving to any citation citation stuff to go through here and figure out where we need footnotes to say, you know, maybe adjourn the meeting. We're not ready to go to that, so we probably need to adjourn.